If we could have a moment of silence for Commissioner Ray Albarigi, who passed away this past week. Besides being a visionary in the Lackawanna County for the progress that was made, many, many things would not have ever happened. He was a Marine, he was a father, he was a great guy. He was, you know, he was 88 years old, 87 years old. But Ray, without Ray, there wouldn't be a lot of things in Lackawanna County. There, you know, I mean, the baseball stadium, Montage Road, all kinds of things. Ray was just really a good politician and a good public servant. Ray's motto was, "Good politics, good government is good politics." And the one that Brian has over, a saying in his office is, "Don't tell me you have a problem, tell me you had a problem and how you fixed it." He was just a, he was a man of few words, but they all meant something. And he's a great guy. Thank you.
He was commissioner for 16 years, right?
Commissioner for 16 years.
Okay.
And a Marine.
I said that.
And a Marine, yes.
I said that.
He said that. Okay. I would like to take a moment to thank the Roaringbrook Township officials for hosting us here today. Tony Jordan, Chairman, the Board of Supervisors, Eric Shield, who is the Vice Chairman of Supervisors, Robert Fershen, Supervisor, Secretary/Treasurer, the Township Office Manager Dale Baird, Township Office Assistant Karen Gabello, and the Township Solicitors Attorney Joseph O'Brien, and Attorney Jenna Tuz. Tuz?
Tuzzi.
Tuzzi, sorry.
Thanks for coming, Eric.
And I'd like to thank the Roaringbrook Township Supervisors for allowing Lackawanna County to hold not only today's meeting at their building, but also allowing Lackawanna County to place a mail-in ballot box in the Township Municipal Building in the past and hopefully in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Reading and Approval of the Minutes for the Hearing Held on August 5th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only. Okay. Ordinances, second reading, 21-0216. It's the second reading of ordinance number 271, amending ordinance 270 and establishing the Tax Claim Bureau's fees. Brian?
Yes, it's the second reading, August 18th, 2021, an ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, modifying, amending, ratifying, and authorizing charges, expenses, and fees associated with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes by the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau under the Municipal Claim Tax Lean Act. The Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna do hereby ordain as follows. Section 1, Point 1. Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a division of the Office of the Lackawanna County Commissioners created pursuant to 5860.201 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, and is responsible for the collection and of delinquent real estate taxes owed to certain taxing districts situated in Lackawanna County. 1.2 pursuant to 7193.5 of the Municipal Claim Tax Lean Act. The Pennsylvania General Assembly has permitted the Tax Claim Bureau of several, of the several counties to adopt and use the procedures set forth in the MCTLA in addition to the procedures set forth in the RETSL. 1.3 Effective October 1st, 2016, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorized the Tax Claim Bureau to utilize the procedures contained in the MCTLA through the Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 244, which is authorization, which is authorization is reaffirmed herein. 1.4 The Tax Claim Bureau and the City of Scranton are parties to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding whereby the City of Scranton has appointed the Tax Claim Bureau to collect its delinquent real estate taxes, and the Tax Claim Bureau has agreed to collect the City of Scranton's delinquent real estate taxes and to file tax claim liens for delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the city pursuant to the provisions of the MCTLA through Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 269. And 1.5 Both the RETSL and the MCTLA authorize the addition of charges, expenses, and fees in connection with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes, and Lackawanna County hereby modifies, ratifies, authorizes, and/or reauthorizes the schedule of charges, expenses, and fees herein described. Section 2, charges, expenses, and fees, 2.1. Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a designee or successor agent is authorized to utilize provisions of the MCTLA in the collection of delinquent taxes. 2.2 Charges, expenses, and fees to be added when applicable during the course of the collection to unpaid real estate taxes. Lackawanna County hereby modifies and/or amends Lackawanna County Ordinance 270 and Ordinance Number 244 related to the collection of charges, expenses, and fees, and hereby modifies, ratifies, approves, and/or reapproves the following fee schedule with retroactive effect January 1st, 2021, for the collection of unpaid real estate taxes pursuant to the provisions of the MCTLA. Interest rate pursuant to 7143 of the MCTLA is a 9%. Statutory notice of fee shifting pursuant to 7106 of the MCTLA is 16 cents. Second notice of the filing shifting pursuant to 7106 of the MCTLA is $1.50. Perfection and service of the tax claim lien is $8. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for the tax claim lien is $53. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for satisfaction of the tax claim lien is $10. County administrative fee not to exceed 5% of the delinquent real estate tax. Attorney's fee not to exceed 5% of the delinquent real estate tax. Section 3, effective date, 3.1, this ordinance shall take immediate retroactive effect to January 1st, 2021, following the enactment. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak about that is our Solicitor Frank Rizero.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. Again, this is an ordinance which amends to prior ordinances, the 2016 ordinance, as well as the December 2020 ordinance, which incorporated the fees. Essentially, all we are doing is that which we have implemented as of May, which is essentially to redistribute, redistribute the initial agreed-upon 10% attorney fee, such that the attorney fee, as indicated in the ordinance, will now not exceed 5%. And the administrative fee, which specifically is paid over and kept within the Treasurer's budget, shall also not exceed 5%. If there's any questions specifically with regards to that, I'm happy to answer that. Otherwise, all other provisions of the prior ordinances remain in full force and effect.
And you did discuss it at length quite a bit.
I did.
At the last meeting on August 5th.
I did.
And actually prior to that.
So, I do have questions.
Sure.
I even brought prompts.
Okay.
So, I had a meeting with our Treasurer, and I blew this up nice and big because I knew we were in a huge room today. I want everybody to all see. So, between the period of April 15th, '21, and July 31st, '21, the payments to Lackawanna County Treasurer's Office was $5.9 million, I'm rounding. Payments to the City of Scranton were 1.9. Payments to the Joyce Law Firm were over $500,000. So, my opinion is the agreement, which I don't agree with, is that they get 10% of the City of Scranton's delinquent tax fees. So, to me, that's $190,000, not a half a million. So, to me, the numbers don't add up. And I still think that the 10% fee is way too high. We already collect 5% out of the fees, or out of the taxes. So, to me, that's more than enough for the county. So, I don't agree with that. And secondly, I'm even going to add one more to it. I don't think Commissioner Dominic, I think she should recuse herself from voting for this, because to me, there's some questionable ties to the Joyce Law Firm. So, I don't think that she should vote.
What questionable ties? Can you give specifics?
Yeah, I'll give you, perfect.
Because I have no.
This was sent to me. That's a law firm on Washington Avenue.
Okay. So, prior to my closing.
Words say it all.
Prior to, well, actually, they don't. You should know what you're talking about first. Prior to closing my downtown practice, I rented space from the North Washington Group. The office that was available was also, there was an office with a copy room, three offices, and a conference room. It was Joyce Carmody and Moran's satellite office. And I moved there because, as opposed to somewhere else in that building, because I was able to use the copy machine, frankly, without having to buy one, which they're expensive. The rent that I paid was to the North Washington Group. I paid checks to the North Washington Group. I have no financial interest, nor have I ever, from anything involving Joyce Carmody and Moran. They don't even practice the same areas of the law as I do. I practiced PI, criminal defense, and workers' comp. I think they do municipal and labor law. So, I don't remember what words you used, but I don't have any type of connection to the Joyce Carmody and Moran law firm, which would, which benefited me in any way, shape, or form financially, either then or now, or which would render me unable to give a unbiased vote and opinion on any matter before us. I'd also like to note that Joyce, Joe Joyce was involved in the Tax Claim Bureau long before I even thought of a political career or a career as a Commissioner. I think he's been there since 2008 and 2009 as a Solicitor, then he was the Acting Director, but that predated me. And to tell you the truth, I've only met him on three occasions, maybe four. So, that's all I'm going to say about that. Again, I don't appreciate the unfounded, non-factual allegations, which do nothing, but they're an attempt to constantly tarnish my reputation. Not sure what your problem is, but having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Frank.
Sure.
And I just want to point out a couple of things. How many, do you know how many taxable properties there are in Scranton?
Roundabout number, my understanding is there's approximately 26,000 to 28,000 taxable properties within the city, and of those taxable properties, there were approximately 2,600 liens that were filed. Here's the important numbers, and I'm not disputing the numbers, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schirmack stated, with the exception specifically of the attorney's fees. Let me, and I also got copies of the reports from the Treasurer's Office. I spoke directly with Mr. Grisenda, I spoke directly with Ms. Linity, and I have those reports, and I provided via email the precise numbers, I think it was Monday evening, to everyone, including Commissioner Schirmack and Minority Solicitor LaBelle. But here's the actual, here's the real numbers. Remember, when we started this process, we did not file liens on any properties prior to 2019. However, we agreed as part of the process, we would assume any collections on behalf of the city that came in. We wouldn't actively collect it, but if they were paid, we would logistically handle those. So, for 2018 and prior collections, there was a total that was received and distributed to the City of Scranton of $509,036. From that, not one nickel was obtained or retained as an attorney fee, not one. All of those dollars went directly to the City of Scranton, because the intergovernmental agreement, again, didn't take effect until the lien started in 2019. Now, for 2019 and 2020, those are the two years in which the liens were initially filed, 19 and 20. The total collected and distributed net of fees and costs to the City of Scranton, So, between those two amounts, there has been through July 31st of 2021, the sum of $3,718,000 in change, almost 3.7, almost 3.75 million. Those are actual dollars delivered. Here's where I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Schirmack. The total attorney fee at 10% would be $543,0961.30. That's not the attorney fee Attorney Joyce has received. He received the initial fee under the initial intergovernmental agreement, which is why we then are entering into the amended ordinance, because right after we began the collections, as I've openly stated in multiple forums, because it was a new program and because we continued to monitor it, we decided, I decided, that I wanted to reduce that fee. Again, and it's important to note, the 10% fee is not a fee that was created by this administration. It was a fee that was adopted by an ordinance or in an ordinance in 2016, four years before this administration took effect. So, we have, in essence, by today's action, reduced the attorney fee from 10% to 5%, and then redistributed that fee. So, in essence, the $543,961.30 that is claimed to have been accepted or received by the Joyce Law Firm is not factual. It's one-half that amount. And then the other half of that amount, which is about 200, I'm sorry, which is about $270,000, was retained as an administrative fee, which goes over to the Treasurer for the additional work the Treasurer's Office has to assume specifically as a result of handling Scranton's collections. No different than the 5% fee the Tax Claim Bureau accepts. So, that's the methodology and the numbers relative to what Attorney, I'm sorry, what Commissioner Schirmack has pointed out. And with regards to the Joyce Law Firm, because, look, I made the decision, and I live by the decision, and I've said this repeatedly. The decision I made at that time was specifically, and I stand by that decision, and I know it's the right decision, because proof is in how well the program works and produces. All of this discussion is a discussion about how much money the program generates and who's getting what. No one's complaining about anything, other than what the attorneys, who are doing the work, are receiving for their services. So, relative to that, at the time, because of the experience of Mr. Joyce, the fact he was the tax claim solicitor since 2008, the fact he was the Acting Director, I think since 2016 or 2017, he was the natural fit for us as the county to implement this program because of his knowledge associated with that office. He was going to rise or fall, as we were, with the implementation of this program. If we were sitting here talking about, you know, 10% is zero is zero. If the program didn't work, then the other side of the discussion is, we didn't do our due diligence, we didn't select the right people. So, I stand by that decision, and I stand by every decision thereafter. Attorney Joyce's firm does do work for the county, and they've been doing work for the county long before this administration took effect, whether it's tax claim, or whether it's labor law, whatever it is that they're doing, or all that it is that they're doing. Most of that was done prior to this administration. Now, that doesn't mean because they're doing that work, I've reviewed all of that, you know, and one of the important things that needs to be pointed out here is when we're talking about fees, and everybody here knows this, one of the first things we did, I did when we came in, is we reduced all the attorney's fees. And that has resulted in our budget, the Solicitor's budget, being about 18, almost 20% under budget from where it was this time last year. That's because of reduction in, because of the reduction in these fees. So, all of these decisions are contemplated. I know oftentimes, relative to the public, they may not know all of the intricacies that go into those decisions, but there are a lot of considerations. And I think Chris knows me well enough to know, and I hope he does, that I do my homework, I do my due diligence, and I understand we have a professional disagreement, and that's okay. You know, we can agree to disagree on those points. But I think relative to the numbers and relative to Attorney Joyce or his firm's involvement in the county, you know, I think both are appropriate, and if I didn't think they were, I would have addressed it a long time ago.
And they up front the costs of $185,000?
They do. So, as part of the agreement, what occurs is all of the initial filing fees, so Attorney Joyce accrued about 100, I think it's $89,000 of his own costs, because unlike many other tax claim bureaus that engage in this type of collection under the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act, and remember, it's only unique to the act, because that's where the liens come from, we required Attorney Joyce, or we would have required any vendor, to pay those costs up front. It wouldn't have been necessarily fair to have county taxpayer dollars pay those liens specifically to one municipality's delinquencies. No different than comments relative to, well, you know, the City of Scranton and its population is 1/3 of the county population, and we understand that. So, as part of that, the requirement was that Attorney Joyce had to pay those fees up front, which he did. So, he incurred about $189,000. He took out a line of credit, paid all those, and he does not get paid back on those liens until those liens are satisfied. That's just the nature of it. So, is there a bit of a risk in there? There is, but I also think based on, you know, and I'm surmising a bit, Attorney Joyce's experience and his prior knowledge of the, of the office, you know, there's a, there's a, a calculable risk for him, as often attorneys make that decision in any case that they handle. So, you know, I think that was all part of his consideration. So, to your point, yes, those fees were paid up front, and they'll be required to continue to be paid up front by any means.
And just one final point. For purposes of transparency, had Chris had the courtesy to talk to me about this issue prior to today, I would have showed him this. I had written checks, checks in the amount of $500 on August 1st, September 1st, October 3rd, November 12th, December 5th, and January 13th to the North Washington Group. Prior to that, I was in another location with several different attorneys, and after winning the primary election, it was very noisy, figuratively and literally. I needed a quiet place to work and not talk about politics, to be frank. And the whole reason why I chose this office, in addition to the fact that the copier was there, was because it's a satellite office that they never used. So, I was there by myself, you could hear a pin drop. But I, you know, I can produce copies of those checks, but I have an online checking recording system, so, there you go. Moving on. Does anybody else have anything?
Well, I think everybody, you know, at some point kind of gets sidetracked with parts of this. The bottom line is, the City of Scranton passed an ordinance in council. The mayor signed it, and they sent it to us. We enacted it. We did what they asked us to do to help them collect taxes. They were unable to do it properly in the past, they paid more money in the past, we have been extremely successful doing it, and now, there's this uproar nonsense over what they asked us to do. Now, they want, we can, we can go back at the end of this year and have another conversation with them, we're in conversations with them, and they can pass another ordinance, and the mayor can sign it, and they can send it to us, and we can decide if we'll do it, which is likely. We're glad to help them. But they have collected more money this year than they had in the last, apparently, by the numbers Frank is saying, probably the last five or six years.
On average, their collection yielded about $750,000 in delinquent taxes a year.
And at the end of the, which we.
Four, five years.
Right now, we're at about, almost 3.75 million.
Do you know, do you have an anticipated amount, like, by year's end?
It's hard to say, because the numbers are going down, but it might, might.
And this is not against all the people in Scranton. This is, this is people that haven't been paying their taxes. And it's not like we go after them, they get two letters explaining to them that what they can do to try to avoid being, having a lien put on their property. It's done by Mr. Joyce, his law firm, and again, he's been working for the Tax Claim Bureau long before I was doing this, long before anyone here has been doing this. He was hired by Commissioners long before we were. He has the experience, he does a great job. It's, it's nothing more than a political football, whatever. You know, and again, the city passed the ordinance, the city, the mayor signed the ordinance, they sent it to us, we agreed to it, we collected for them, we do a great job. And on that notion, though, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading.
Do we do a motion to approve this?
We have to do a motion, yeah. Yeah, to approve it.
All right, I'll second it.
Question?
We're in reverse roles now. He has me all confused. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on. 21-0217, second reading of ordinance number 272, establishing the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services.
Yes, it's the second reading, August 18th, 2021, an ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, establishing the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services. Be it ordained and enacted, and it is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, as follows. Section 1, the establishment of a single county Lackawanna, Lackawanna County Department of Health pursuant to the local health administrative law, under the umbrella of the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services. Lackawanna County Department of Health will be responsible for foundational programs, communicative disease control, prevention and health promotion, environmental health, and access to clinical preventative services. The purpose of the Department of Health is to preserve, promote, and protect the health, safety, and well-being of the people and the environment in the county. Integration with human services will leverage resources and partnerships to allow the county to provide physical health as a component of overall health and well-being. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect upon enactment. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Browning.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners. By passing this ordinance, it will allow us to impanel a Board of Health. The Board of Health then will do a search for a Director of Department of Health. In addition, it will afford us additional resources from the state to allow us to move towards the development of a full Department of Health.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading?
We'll make a motion, second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, Bill.
Resolutions, 21-0220, proving current payables. Brian?
Beat resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 326728-327514, inclusive totaling $2,756,154.35. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $5,805,543.10. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review them. Do I have a motion to approve the current payables?
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 21-0215, awarding arts and culture mini-grants.
Beat resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the following arts and cultural mini-grants to the following community organizations. The Archbowl Harvest Festival, which will be held on September 27th, 2021. The Clark Summit Series of Virtual Art Demos, January through February of 2021. Dummore's Annual Cemetery Tour, October 3rd through the 10th of 2021. The Mayfield Concert in Mayfield Municipal Park, August 8th, 2021. Roaringbrook Musical Performance at Elmhurst Roaringbrook Volunteer Firement, June 26th, 2021. And Thornhurst, the children's art activities at the Ice Cream Social, which will, which will be held on August 22nd, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
Hey, Maureen. Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everyone's well. So, it's appropriate that we are in a municipal building, because I'm happy to say our arts and culture mini-grants are back on track. So, those are just six projects, two are retroactive since we had to get this program back on track, but there'll be four more upcoming the end of the summer and the fall.
Does anybody have any questions for Maureen? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0215?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen. 21-0.
I mistake the Maureen.
21-0218, entering into an agreement with evaluator services and technology.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a professional services and software agreement with evaluator services and technology for the assessors department in order to maintain the homestead/farmstead role. Agreement to commence and expire, I'm sorry, agreement to commence immediately and expire on June 30th, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Here to speak upon that is Solicitor Rosario.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. As indicated, this is a professional services and software agreement. We, as the county, have certain statutory duties in connection with our county assessments. Particularly, we have a requirement to maintain a homestead/farmstead role. EValuator Services and Technology has been the provider doing that for us. EST has the necessary software knowledge, experience, and skills and personnel to perform this function, and the county needs the professional services of EST that EST possesses in order to maintain compliance with the county assessment law. If there's any questions. And indicated, I apologize, the contract takes effect as of March 2020 and will terminate in June of 2022, and it's at a cost, total cost of 28 months, not to exceed $41,000. If for some instance it's anticipated to exceed that amount, then it would come back to the Commissioners for additional.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0218?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. 21-0219, closing out the Community Conservation Partnerships Grant Project.
Whereas the county of Lackawanna with the county of Luzerne has prepared a bicycle and pedestrian plan for the downtown Scranton and Wilkes-Barre areas. And whereas the purpose of the plan is to designate and design for the development of facilities to promote bicycle and pedestrian usage in a safe and efficient manner. And whereas the plan was financed in part by a Community Conservation Partnerships Program, grant, under the administration of the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, Bureau of Recreation and Conservation under contract number B R C T A G 23-223. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna that the project was completed in accordance with the grant agreement. All project expenditures have been made and were in accordance with the grant agreement. The plan and related materials are acceptable to the county of Lackawanna. The plan and related materials will be used to guide future recreation and conservation decisions. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco.
Hey, Brenda.
Good morning. In 2018, Lackawanna County took the lead to undertake the bicycle and pedestrian study for the central business districts of Scranton and Wilkes-Barre in coordination with Luzerne County. The planning commissions of both counties worked with the consultant Barry Islett Associates to complete the study. This resolution will close out the grant, and it will allow us to seek reimbursement from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources in the amount of $75,000. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. So I have a motion to approve 21-0219.
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution 21-0224, entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Scranton Police Department.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Scranton Police Department for the application and implementation of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Scranton Police Department's Civil Disturbance Unit in the amount of $82,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, this is a yearly grant, the Byrne Memorial Grant, that the city of Scranton requests us to put into the motions for the commissioners' meetings that we can get the grant money for the Scranton Police Department.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on it? So motion to approve 21-0224?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. 21-0221, appointments to the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority: William Cockrell, 1264 O'Neill Highway, Dummore, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024; Dominic Carini, 133 Besaglio Street, Jessup, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025; Sherry Pritchett, 51 J Avenue, Scott Township, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority: Ashley Jones, 607 Dunn Avenue, Oak Forest, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2021; Vince Sardo, 237 South Apple Street, Dummore, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024; Eric Hartzwin, 323 Lynch Street, Alphit, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0221?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. 21-0222, appointments to the Lackawanna County Industrial Development Authority.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Industrial Development Authority: William Boyle, 207 Seventh Street, Vandling, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022; Joseph X. Garvey, 110 Spring Street, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024; Thomas Owen Jr., 1196 State Street, Archibald, term to begin immediately and expire in December 31st, 2021. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Industrial Development Authority: Eugene Walsh, Fidelity Bank, 101 North Blakely Street, Dummore, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025; Keith Yurgoski, University of Scranton's Small Business Development Center, 600 Linden Street, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025; Tim Booth, 216 Berry Drive, South Abington Township, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2022; Brenda Sacco, Director of the Economic Development, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024; and Lori Barrett, Esquire, Fidelity Bank, 101 North Blakely Street, Dummore, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0222?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. 21-0223, appointment to the Area Agency Aging Advisory Board.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Area Agency Aging Advisory Board: Representative Bridget Kozarowski, 802 South Main Street, Taylor; Susie Connors, 2630 Burning Avenue, Scranton, PA. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 18th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
And just for the public's knowledge, and anyone else who cares to know, that the reason why we don't have terms is, as of right now, that's an advisory board, that there are members, I think there's a total of 18. They do not have terms. But I do believe that Jason Kuvulich, who is our Director of Area Agency on Aging, will be at some point giving or setting...
He'll be providing us with the dates until...
Yes. He'll be setting the terms once we, once the board is, the two replacements are made. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0223?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. Motions. 21-0255, motion to accept the proposal submitted and award the professional website redesign to revise. You want to, it's called the government website experts, 150 Kurtz Boulevard, Troy, Michigan, 48084, pending the solicitor review of the agreement at a cost of $42,600 plus a yearly maintenance and hosting fee. Do we want to have anybody talk on that?
Tracy could speak on it if she'd like.
Yeah, you guys have any questions? We received 31 proposals. They were due July 30th. The committee met and reviewed all of the proposals. We selected five, our top five, and we interviewed them on a Friday. The committee then went again, and we came up with this as being the best. They were above and beyond. I mean, they blew...
Who was on that committee?
They blew the entire committee away. It was myself, it was Economic Development Director Brenda Sacco, our IT Director Mike Brown, Communications Director Joe Lorenzo, and our outreach manager Terry.
Yeah, we did, and I talked to Tracy about it too. And one thing that I liked about that firm, I didn't see the list of all the other firms, but they do a lot of county websites.
Yes, they've stated that they've done over 2,200 government websites.
I'll make the motion to accept the proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question. All in favor? Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Hi.
Hey, how you doing, Nick? My name's Eric Setzer. A few weeks ago, I was here and I asked the question, you know, how we...
I'm sorry. Can you go to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sure. Absolutely. Thank you. Good. How are you? So, I was here, I was here a couple weeks ago, and my name's Eric Setzer. I asked the question of how secure we thought the election process was in Lackawanna County. I was assured by the commission and the board that, you know, it was on the up and up, and everything is as it needs to be. However, doing my own research, I found many experts in this field, data analysis, former army captains, Seth Keschel being one of them, that states, you know, they're, according to his map, they've been marked in the red, Lackawanna and our adjacent counties of Luzerne. The red on his map means that there is some major fraud in this area. I'm not here to say the election was rigged. I'm not here to call anybody out. We just want to know that it's secure. And I'm not the only one. I'm the voice for many, many citizens here in Pennsylvania. There's an audit-to-vote petition with over 110,000 signatures on it. I don't stand alone when I want to know that the integrity of our elections are going to be restored through this process. We deserve to know that our elections are safe and honest and secure, and the only way to prove that is to do a full forensic audit like they're doing in Arizona. We just want to know that the integrity of our elections are secure, and it's secured for our children and our grandchildren. And we want to be able to stand here and say everything was done the way that it was supposed to do. In the criminal world, if there's any reasonable suspicion of doubt, an investigation goes on. I find this investigation to be very important. This is our livelihoods. This is our communities. This is our businesses. I think it's time that, you know, maybe we can move forward with this. Maybe I'm in the wrong spot. Maybe I can get some direction from some people that may be more intelligent than I. But I think this is important, and I understand there's many dollars going to many other very important things in this county and this country. But I think this is one of the most important things that we can focus on. I appreciate you coming out here and letting me speak, and thank you for your time.
Is that something that we can...
We'll take them under our badge.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, sir.
Brian, I didn't think, huh?
Would you listen to me?
Did it respond?
Yeah.
Ralph, back to Norman Madison Township. You know, any grant or anything else at all comes out of taxpayers, right? And why, when Mr. Chermack said something about 5%, I agree with that part. Because no matter what, no matter what, you're saying you're collecting plenty of taxes, everything going fine, right? And I'm still paying my school taxes, and it went up another $700 in Madisonville. And you guys, before the pandemic, you raised the county taxes, 11%, whatever it was, and you don't do nothing for me over there. I want something. I'm 82 years old. I need something, right? Now, you know, everything comes out of taxes, no matter what the grant is or whatever. And I don't begrudge anybody getting what they should get. But we get nothing over there. Why raise my county taxes? And you don't have to collect my link with taxes because I pay it. Work day and night and pay it, right? And why can't we, there's a big controversy over reassessment. Why can't that be on a referendum? Is that possible? You're talking about reassessing the county?
We're in the process of issuing an RFP for reassessment. This is the first process towards reassessment. We have to issue an RFP for companies to respond to RFP, RFP to determine who we're going to have to do the reassessment.
But it could be on a referendum, couldn't it?
It could, sir. And if you recall, the last administration attempted to put it on as a ballot question, but they couldn't get the question correct.
But they didn't have the question right.
They couldn't get the question correct. I think what Commissioner Dominic is indicating, and the steps the commissioners have taken, they've already authorized the preparation of an RFP, a request for proposal, so that we can start gathering in proposals about the reassessment process. So it may be that they're going to be taking action on it in the future without even having to put it on as a referendum.
Well, taxes keep going up, you know, like North Porcupine there. It went from $24 million budget to $60 million budget, 300 students left, another school in the swamp, and I've been there for 80 years. I know all about it, right? Bigger is not better. Pretty soon, North Porcupine is going to be as bad as Scranton. We're going to have a controversy over the schools. And I agree. But everybody in Harmony Hills don't have a little ranch house like me. And one time, when I was on the board, I did a survey through the whole works, and what they were assessed at, they were almost equal to some of my little ranch house, until it was done a little bit different, right? It's not fair to start with, you know what I mean? It's not fair to start with. You know, it needs to be done, I think. Okay? And I got one other question. Is, do I have a right to ask a question when it's involving taxpayers and the public? I want to know what happened to my buddy Davey Han. Why is he gone? Is that personal? Can you answer that?
On one hand, now, and again, this isn't a, this isn't a debate, so we'll address your questions afterwards, and I'll be glad to talk to you about that. Okay? The opportunity to address the board, we'll be glad to address your questions.
Well, I, I, not that he's only a friend, I tell you, he did a good job.
Yeah.
Okay. Lower my taxes. The last time I wore a mask, I had a gun. The little ranger didn't cover his mouth. He only covered his eyes. I left my gun home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else going on? How would you like to...
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioners Other Business. Jerry?
Well, on one hand, you're, Mr. Antidorm, you're saying, you know, you gotta lower taxes. Well, that's, that's a great concept, but the bottom line is the cost of government continually rises. We deal with seven unions. They all have contracts. They all have collective bargaining agreements. Their rates go up, their pays go up. We can't control that. If we do, we get grieved and we lose.
They don't do this. So you're playing your...
Yeah, all right. But, you know, again, we do the best we can to try to maintain and to lower cost of things. In the case of Mr. Han, wonderful person, it's a position that wasn't needed any longer. There were two people that he chose to do those two particular jobs, 911 Emergency Services. It's like everything else. You have to decide how you're going to cut spending so that taxes don't have to go up, and when they do, it can be as limited as possible. It's just part of doing business. I mean, you know, again, I, in the, the public sector is different than the private sector.
I'll bless you.
God bless you, yeah.
It is difficult, though, because if we don't generate revenue and cut taxes, then there's a tax increase. But when we do things to generate revenue or cut taxes, we are sometimes criticized for it. So we really do try to do what's best for the residents.
You know what, the way I look at it? When I was on a school board, you have one or two public come up and say something, and then you got the majority. One time, you're in the majority, next time, you're not in the majority, and they say, well, everything is all right because nobody shows up. But in public, nobody's happy, but they don't show up because you're the control, you're the power. But if you have 500 people show up at every school board and they didn't like them, they scare them out of their seat. Because you're not, you should use your own mind and not follow the leader just because somebody tells you what to do. You ain't got enough. It's like GPS in a truck driver. They're running onto the bridge of Main Avenue, right, with a 13-foot trailer, and it won't fit, right? You seen that? Well, the GPS told them to go that way. You need to go to college to get your GPS right? What happened to the one you were born with?
So I, I miss on the point here.
I come from a school of sidewalk intervention. It went to seventh grade, and I'm proud of it, and I was on the board. And there were some dummies down there that went to college. And what was done like burnt cookies, the dog won't eat them.
I've seen many tractor trailers do that, unfortunately.
That's right. You gotta admire if somebody has knowledge. I got a granddaughter that's a doctor right now, one of my kids. She's doing her residency in Philly, but didn't go to North Polkino. She was like that when she was two years old, always wanted to be a doctor. Some people.
She'd be very proud of that.
Thanks, Mr. Antedorme.
You know what I mean?
You're a good man.
I don't mean to hold you guys up, but you need a little inspiration. Thank you. You know what I mean?
Anyway.
Thank you.
What else do we want to address? Anything? Do we want to address anything else? The election question, Donnie? Did you want to address anything involving the election, the question?
Mr. Antedorme, or I'm sorry, Eric's statement about this. Well, I mean, last time I think we addressed it was here, the, the election in Lackawanna County was, you know, throughout the state was unprecedented. We finished the county election night. We were first largest major county in the state to do that. Additionally, you know, the, the results have been audited by the Board of Elections, and they've been certified through the Board of Elections and through the state. So I really don't know what else, what else to tell you. To engage in a, in an audit, as they're doing in Arizona, first of all, it's very expensive, and second of all, the Department of State has already told us, if we do that, they're going to dis-identify our machine, which is going to cost us about $3 million to replace, so.
What's $3 million to your citizens, though? Where's the paper trail from the ballots? Why is it all electronic? And why are you toting yourself that you were the first one to certify elections? That's a bit concerning.
There is a paper, there is a paper. What do you mean, there is a paper?
Okay, this isn't, this isn't, stop, this isn't a debate, he answered the question.
There is a paper trail. All the ballots are on paper. If you're in the basement, we have them. So I don't know, I understand there's no paper trails.
All right, Chris?
Um, I got a letter from Dixon City Borough regarding Dundav Street damages due to the flooding a month or so ago. And basically, I won't read the whole letter, but at the end, you know, at this point, the boroughs has expected or expended approximately $500,000, which is a large portion of their operating, yearly operating budget. So combined with the shortfall, the revenue due to the pandemic, has placed on our town and the dire, and in their entire financial condition. Dixon City's looking for some help, and, you know, I, I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but if there's something we can do to help Dixon City Borough, I don't think the, the amount that the damages doesn't allow them to collect money from the, the state or the federal government, so they're looking at us. So if there's anything we can do, I'd like to try to help them.
Commissioner, we, we are looking into that.
I met Brenda Sacco yesterday.
Actually, the day after the flood, Chief Jeffers and I were up there, and we spoke with them, and then we were there again another time, and saw, it was devastating.
Yeah, I was there the day of the flood, so.
And we were there recently, though, with a meeting from, a lot of representatives from the Congressman's Office to the State Senate, the United States Senator's Office, and then all their borough officials, and they expressed the same, you know, concerns, and everybody is very much in tune to this, and we are working on this, and it is something that's, that's an ongoing situation.
And Brenda, you and I met in your, yesterday afternoon.
We're going to reach out to the Dixon City Borough.
They've been speaking with Brenda, yeah.
Yes, and we're going to set up a meeting with my grant manager and my community development manager, and we're going to see if there's any type of grant opportunities that might be out there for them as well.
Other than that, I attended an event this weekend at Camp Freedom. Camp Freedom is just north of Carbondale, and it's for veterans, first responders, and it was their summer salute. Great turnout, a lot of things for the kids to do and for the families of the Gold Star families and any, it, it's open to anybody, it's all free to the veterans, first responders. So if you don't know anything about it, look it up, Camp Freedom, it's a great organization and good group of people. And the last thing I have is, is back to the emails again. You know, we're still in a pandemic, it's ramping up again. I still, I, I make a motion here that we accept email questions or comments to the commissioners' meetings. I'd like to see that get back on. If not, continue to send them to schermacksee@lackawannacounty.org, I'll read them. But I'd like to put that out there, I'd like to make a motion that we put them back on.
Do I have a second to his motion?
Well, you know, I, I would like to speak with Solicitor Jerry prior to doing that, so I make a motion that we table it.
I'll second that.
Well, in the meantime, they can send them to me.
On the question? All in favor of tabling it? Aye. Okay, so I have something positive that I'd like to talk about. So, it's really nice to see something come to fruition. I worked very closely with John Chilary, I'm saying his name correctly, correct? Okay, from Lackawanna College, who is involved with the Act 120 program there, and also with Brenda Sacco, who's our Director of Economic Development. So, everybody is aware of the George Floyd incident, and I believe that was like the culmination of many other incidents prior to that involving the police and people of color, minorities, and it has generated a divide, I believe, in a culture of, of dislike towards the, towards the police in general, which is not fair. I, in Lackawanna County, we have some of the best police officers, and luckily, we've never had anything that even remotely rose to the level of something that occurred to Mr. Floyd. But I always believe that we should be proactive in addressing these issues, because even though these incidents are occurring outside of Lackawanna County, they're heavily put on the, they're, they're on the media quite often, and people are aware of it, and people still become affected by it. You don't need to live close to George Floyd or in the same county or same state as, as he did to be affected by what occurred and what happened to that poor man. So, I think that, or from what I was thinking and how I, I approached this training that I'm about to tell you about, is that I want to be proactive for our police officers so that they're given the proper tools to handle situations where, when they're placed in a situation where the, the, the general public or the people that they're pulling over or investigating, if, if those people have a negative inference towards the police or have an anxiety or fear of the police because of these incidents that have occurred, you know, across the country, it can affect the way that those people respond to the police, and then it can, you know, affect the way the police respond to those people. And police officers put their, their lives on the line every day. They don't know when they pull a car over, what they're going to be walking up to, and I find that to be a very scary situation to be in. So, what we did, and again, Mr. Chilary and Ms. Sacco and I, we developed a program that is, it was developed by Lackawanna County, or Lackawanna College Police Academy. It's being offered to all Lackawanna County law enforcement agencies, and it's sponsored by Lackawanna County. The topics that we are going to address are, and these are not the same topics that police officers receive in their Act 120, or in the classes that they take for their annual credits that they need. They are behavioral health and substance abuse, because as many of you know, we do still have an opioid epidemic, and people with addiction issues commonly suffer also mental health issues, and I, I think we're losing sight of that a little bit. As a matter of fact, I, I spoke to Mark Powell, our DA, not too long ago, and he said, you know, the drug issue and the opioid issue, and now we're having this issue with meth on top of everything else, is, is actually getting worse during this pandemic. But because everybody's so concerned with the, the pandemic and having a wear mask and what restrictions we have and whatnot, and, and protecting ourselves from getting ill, we're losing sight of that, and people are still dying. So, that's the first topic. The de-escalation, which specifically goes to help police officers get the tools and have the opportunity to learn maybe different tools to be able to de-escalate a situation if they are put in a scenario where things are escalating and could potentially cause safety issues either for them, the people that they are investigating, or both. Individual with special needs and mental health, that kind of goes back to my behavioral health, but again, you know, we have to pay special attention to people with special needs, mental health issues, and substance abuse issues. Human perceptions and how they affect behavior and communication, bias profiling and procedural justice, and then sensitivity, diversity, diversity and inclusion. So those are the six topics. Now, police officers need 4.5 hours, I'm sorry, they need 12 hours of municipal police officers' education and training commission credits, which is MOPAC, it's called, it's M-P-O-E-T-C. We made sure that these, that this training is MOPAC approved, so that when the police officers take these courses, they can use those credits towards their, their, their needed 12 hours. Now, I don't think that that should be the only reason why that police officers should go to this training. I, I think, I think the training is important because of the topics and because of what I said previously. However, it's an added bonus. So, there's going, you're going, the police officer will receive 4.5 hours of the continuing law enforcement education that they need towards that, those 12 hours that they need annually. Food and beverages will be served. The dates and times, and all this will be, will be posted, but the dates and times for the seminars, it's a four and a half hour seminar, is Monday, September 13th, from 3:30 to 8:00. There's a second one, Monday, September 20th, from 3:30 to 8:00. A third one, Friday, September 24th, from 8:30 to 1:00. And then the last one will be Monday, September 27th, from 8:30 to 1:00. Now, we are also looking into, depending on the turnout and people's interest, and the fact that a lot of police officers now, being almost September, having their MOPAC credits already completed, maybe having some dates in, in January, so that then they can attend and get the MOPAC credits for, for this program. The location for the training is going to be at our 911 Center, which is located at 30 Valley View Drive in Jessup. There's no fee for the program. Again, we're going to serve food and beverages, we were told by John Chilary that it's an added bonus, and people appreciate it. And also, we are going to reimburse the police departments for any overtime or backfill costs associated with their police officers attending this program. In order for the municipal chiefs to be reimbursed, what they need to do is contact Brenda Sacco, she will give them a form, they will complete it, and then they will be reimbursed for any overtime or backfill costs associated with allowing their officers to attend this training. Pre-registration is required, it can be done by email only, and there's information on this form, which will be posted on our county website, our county Facebook page, and the Economic Development Facebook page, so you can see that information. And then also, the way we paid for this, it was funding provided by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Office of Community and Economic Development through the Economic Development and Community Development Initiatives Grant Program. So it was all paid for, that's a mouthful, all paid for by grants. And really, there's no downside to this. Important topics, free C-L-E-Es, and no overtime or backfill costs will be incurred by any municipality. So we have 40 municipalities and boroughs in Lackawanna County. I'm really, really, really asking the chiefs to please encourage all of their police officers to attend this training. I think it's really important to be proactive, because again, even though we don't have incidents that are, or we haven't to this point, incidents that arise to the, arise to the level that we've seen nationally, that doesn't mean that we, we're not headed there, and it doesn't mean that the culture that those type of incidents generate isn't spreading across the country. So I want to keep our citizens safe, and I also want to keep our police officers safe. So, it's really exciting that this is done, because this was like quite a few months that we worked on this. So again, it'll all be posted online, and if anybody has any questions for me or Brenda after the meeting or now, you can ask. And again, please encourage your, all your chiefs, encourage the, your police officers to attend. Anybody?
Can I speak to them?
Mm-hmm.
How are you? How are you?
My name is Tony Jordan, I'm a, well, my name is Tony Jordan, I'm a supervisor here in Orem Brook, and I appreciate what you just said about this program you developed. We do have a police department, we have two full-time people and three part-time people. So it's something that I believe that our people would, would welcome and participate in.
Thank you.
And we will do everything on our part to, to encourage them to take advantage of this training, and we appreciate all the effort you put into it. And, you know, even going, even going to reimburse us for the cost, I mean, that's super.
And it's not about us saying that we think that the police officers aren't prepared to handle these situations or aren't capable to handle, handle, are capable of handling these situations. It's just that, you know, times are changing, and you have to stay with what is occurring in the world, and I believe that, you know, the more training, the better, we need to be proactive. So, again, we have great police officers in Lackawanna County, and we just want to keep it that way.
Amen to that. We're only two, two hours from Philadelphia and New York City, so.
That's right.
You know, you don't have to go to a big city to get in trouble these days. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, they ought to shut the gates. Shut the gates.
All right. On that note, I'll take a motion for a German.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.